We are going to reconvene this October 27th meeting of the Board of Supervisors. I'll call it order. We, before we vote for lunch, we are right in the middle of public discussion or comments in regards to item number four, which is an ordinance adding and repealing provisions in the San Diego County Code regarding the sale of tobacco products in the unincorporated area of San Diego County. We're going to go ahead and pick up with the remaining speakers we have on this item. Again, as your number is called up by the clerk of the board, I would ask you, please combine your comments within two minutes and try not to be repetitious of other comments that have been made by other speakers. So, Mr. Proder, do you want to go ahead and begin calling the remaining speakers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have fourteen remaining callers for this item. Again, we'll be calling you by the last four digits of your phone number and you'll hear a notification that your call has been unmuted and you'll need to press star six to unmute your phone. I also ask you to please state your name for the audio record. Erin, if you could please identify the first caller.
Thank you. Our first caller is seven nine seven eight. Again, seven nine seven eight, please press star six to unmute yourself. And if we don't hear from you, we will move on and come back to you. Our next caller is six seven one six. Six seven one six.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Dana Stevens and I'm the Executive Director for Community Action, Service, and Advocacy, or CASA as we're known, and we are proud Live Well San Diego Partners. CASA is in a unique position of having experienced positive results in the city of El Cajon since it adopted a TRL in 2004. We have seen firsthand the reduction in illegal tobacco, including vapes, hookah, and e-cigarette sales to minors from forty percent pre-policy to one percent by 2011. The reduction in illegal sales resulted in a ninety-one percent reduction in current or past thirty-day tobacco use among eleventh graders between 2008 and 2018. And a fifty-nine percent, I'm speaking. And a fifty-nine percent reduction in vape use among that same population between 2014 and 2018. There are three key elements that have ensured the success of this ordinance in El Cajon, though it really isn't a perfect ordinance. But the three key elements are, one, an annual fee high enough to recover the cost of program administration and enforcement. That cost is currently $709 per year. Number two is that they conduct annual compliance checks on each and every retailer in the city. And number three, they have incrementally increasing penalties on the retailer, and that's the shop owner or operator, not the clerk, for violations, including license revocation for repeat offenders. But I have to note that no retailers have lost their license or had it revoked for violation. As the contractor working with the city of El Cajon to conduct compliance monitoring, we have seen a growing trend toward flavored tobacco products, particularly the little two-pack of mini cigars, commonly called Swisher Sweets, in flavors like cherry dynamite. These typically sell for $1.49 to $1.79, a price that's easily affordable for youth. Given that more than 100 cities have enacted schools, yes?
May I ask you to please conclude your comments? Your time is up.
Yes. I just want to thank you for your leadership to ensure the protection for young people throughout the unincorporated communities of San Diego. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is three two three four. Three two three four.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Effeni Sodiksha. I'm from North County and I'm in opposition of this ordinance. I don't want to repeat everything again that's already been through. All I want to say is I agree with all the comments made by oppositions therefore. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next caller is seven nine zero nine. Seven nine zero nine. And again, if we don't hear from you when your number is called, we'll come back to you. Our next caller is five eight three zero.
Good afternoon. My name is Aysel Bakhtiarova and I live in El Cajon, East County. And I agree with the opposition that was said earlier today and I urge you to modify the ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next caller is five eight three zero. Five eight three zero.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Satya Ina. I'm calling from South County. I am just calling to say that I agree with the opposition and I don't want to have to repeat it either, but that's it.
Thank you. Our next caller is three four nine six. Three four nine six.
Hello, my name is Jean Duffy. I've lived in the town of Julian for twenty-six years and I have three children, all in their twenties, who all grew up in Julian, and my husband is the superintendent of Julian Union School District. First, I want to thank Supervisor Jacob for her leadership, her integrity, her wisdom, and her compassion in protecting San Diego's residents, visitors, and especially our youth by making public health a priority when it comes to not just restricting tobacco, but also in many other ways, following the vision of Live Well San Diego, building better health. You've done a remarkable job representing us in the back country and throughout unincorporated San Diego County. You're appreciated and you'll be greatly missed. So, one of the best ways to ensure local stores aren't selling deadly tobacco products to kids is to license tobacco retailers through strong retailer license requirements. For many years, I've been an adult supervisor taking young adults out to retailer stores throughout East County to conduct compliance checks. It is still so surprising and disappointing to me how easy it is for these young people to buy tobacco products. Retailers need to be held accountable for selling tobacco to minors. In addition, we need to restrict all flavored tobacco products, which mask the harsh taste of tobacco and are highly appealing to kids. My husband, as an educator and a school administrator at a junior high school, has watched this vaping epidemic escalate over the past few years. He speaks regularly to administrators throughout the county who are catching kids vaping flavored e-cigarettes on campus and finding littered vapes in bathrooms, hallways, and in student parking lots. They need your help. Easy access to kid-friendly flavors tobacco, flavored tobacco is driving the e-cigarette and tobacco epidemic we see today. Stop the sale of all flavored tobacco products. Don't include an exemption for hookah, which will only increase health disparities. All of our friends and neighbors are loved and valued. They all deserve to be protected from a lifetime of addiction. I encourage the board to pass strong legislation that will protect our youth and make San Diego County a healthier place. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is four four zero zero. Four four zero zero.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hi, yes, we can hear you.
Yes. Good morning, Chairman Cox, members of the County Board of Supervisors and staff. My name is Arkon Semo, President of the Neighborhood Market Association. We are in support of the tobacco retail licensing portion of this ordinance. However, we are deeply concerned with some of the provisions that will have a devastating effect on every family-owned business who engages in selling tobacco products in the unincorporated areas of San Diego County. We believe this ordinance goes beyond the original proposal and the direction given by the County Board of Supervisors to the county staff on your meeting of October 15, 2019. My testimony today does not address the revision to the county's ban on sales of flavored tobacco product, which is currently subject to legal challenges. NMA members are very diverse and include independent supermarkets, convenience and liquor stores, smoke and vape shops. They support many of the provision in this ordinance, such as education on training program, no self-service display, the packaging and labeling, display pricing, compliance monitoring, and decoy operation, reasonable penalties and suspensions, and license revocation for multiple violation within a year. Our members are very committed to be a part of the solution to prevent youth access to tobacco product and they would be very grateful for your consideration. And I already submitted a full detail of the provisions that, you know, we wanted to consider. For example, allowing transfer of tobacco license, just like we have an ABC license. We allow to transfer a business license, a health permit. We also ask you to remove the minimum age requirement, the twenty-one, and also the ban on delivery services. Pricing and restriction are very dangerous because they are very punitive and will hurt these businesses. And most importantly, you need to reconsider the suspension and revocation. People are mentioning the city of El Cajon. The city of El Cajon only have it for six months. You're having it for five years. Within five years, half of the businesses will lose their licenses in the county. I thank you. I know my time is up and I appreciate your support for these modifications. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is five seven seven six.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, hi.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Miguel Gomez and I live in Orange Side. So, it was back in high school where I was kind of first introduced to the vaping epidemic and how seriously it could possibly be. I started noticing like so many students had a lot of vapes and despite the teacher's best efforts and even principal's rules, they still managed and how many they confiscated, the teacher would still find students with vapes. They would hide pretty much anywhere and they would keep it on them and they would always somehow get these in short amount of time. This was kind of like when I kind of noticed where this was serious problem. And it wasn't until I began volunteering with the best community clinic to, for a compliance check with retailers where I kind of noticed where I would go to unincorporated areas in the county. And basically, I would try to see if someone who's underage could see, can buy cigarettes. And to my surprise and to my partner's surprise too, when we went there, I was able to purchase it despite me being underage and they didn't even question me. Again, with the compliance check, there wasn't, what I was told to do is just to try to see if I can buy any and I was able to. And I just kind of think that's kind of a bit of a problem. So, I'm calling to show support for this law to be passed and hopefully that we, with this law passed, there can be a difference being made. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is three two seven four. Three two seven four.
Good morning to the Board of Supervisors and thank you. My name is James Allison and I am calling today with the California Fuels and Convenience Alliance to represent the 12,000 convenience retailers here in California. The retailers represented by CFCA are mostly small, family, and immigrant-owned businesses that will be directly affected by the decisions made by the county to implement a TRL. CFCA is dedicated to advocating for the safe and responsible retail age-restricted products. That stated, we ask that you please consider the increasing cost of burden or the increasing cost of doing business here in California and set the TRL price fairly as to not impact small businesses. For many of these stores, even what might be perceived as a slight setback can be crippling to a family operation that depends on store revenue for groceries and school supplies. We ask that you consider these elements and not unfairly burden these small businesses. Moreover, by placing a restriction on the sale of single-use products, the county would likely create a larger black market for these goods. Instead of purchasing the single item where the consumer wanted, they would now have ten times the amount of items that they would like and therefore give or sell to others who may not be of legal age. Others who cannot afford a pack of ten will purchase them from those who can afford the larger pack. Offering single items is the best way to control the sales and use of low-cost products. Finally, the use of smoked tobacco products is not common among underage users. These products are used largely by adults of legal age who in many cases are trying to use them to transition from smoke to tobacco. By placing a ban on these products in the county, it would likely force these users to purchase these products from outside county lines, taking with them tangential sales like fuel and groceries in addition to the value tax revenue they bring to the county. Thank you for your consideration and if you have any further questions or comments, please do not hesitate to reach out to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is six nine zero two. Six nine zero two.
Good afternoon, Council. Good afternoon, Chairman Cox, members of the board and staff. My name is Pierre Maurice and I work for the American Lung Association as a health promotion specialist. Over thirty percent of high school students now use tobacco and easy access to flavored products is driving these numbers. Youth under the age of twenty-one are often able to purchase tobacco products at all types of retailers, ranging from convenience stores and gas stations to large chain grocery stores and pharmacies, even though it is illegal to sell tobacco products to minors. To combat this problem, over 130 California communities have licensed their tobacco retailers. This straightforward licensing program allows communities to keep track of tobacco retailers, conduct enforcement to ensure compliance with state and local laws, and penalize retailers who sell to minors. Central to a tobacco retail license is an annual fee on all retailers that covers the cost of program administration and enforcement. American Lung Association cities sufficient annual licensing fees as a key provision and best practice of a tobacco retail licensing policy. In fact, licensing fees are found to be critical to effectively reducing illegal sales to minors. The ordinance before you today does not include any language pointing to an annual fee and this could lead the program severely underfunded in future years. Thank you so, thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next caller is five zero zero eight. Five zero zero eight. And again, if we don't hear from you, we will call on you again. Our next caller is two one five three. Two one five three.
Five zero zero eight.
Hi there, we're having-
Yes, my name- I'm sorry. My name is Deborah Kelly and I thank you for your leadership. I support prohibiting the sale of all flavored tobacco products and adopting a strong tobacco retailer licensing program. Flavors hook kids. We have seen over and over again that policy exemptions lead to increased youth tobacco use and health disparities. The combined impact of tobacco use and COVID on lungs, lives, and livelihoods is horrific. Every element of the tobacco retailer licensing ordinance is proven to reduce tobacco use and save lives. Please act to safeguard youth, improve public health, and promote economic recovery. Thank you for protecting people, not tobacco products.
Thank you. Our next caller is one nine nine zero. One nine nine zero. We will move on to three four one four. Three four one four. Hi there.
Here today to support a strong policy to protect our kids from tobacco addiction, disease, and death. Easy access to candy-flavored tobacco is fueling the sky-high numbers of youth tobacco use we're seeing today. Ending the sale of all flavored tobacco products without exemption and licensing tobacco retailers with annual fees and strong enforcement are evidence-based policies to reduce youth tobacco use. It is especially critical that the board include all flavored tobacco products and not roll back existing statutes to exempt loose-leaf tobacco and premium cigars. Any exemption will weaken the policy and make enforcement more difficult and more expensive for the county. All flavored tobacco products are hooking kids and should be included in the policy. We know you've heard that a tobacco retail license isn't needed or won't reduce youth tobacco access, but the evidence clearly refutes that. A report by the California Tobacco Control Program found that communities with strong tobacco retail license policies have seen their illegal sales to minors fall dramatically. At the center of an effective license is an annual fee required by all retailers to cover the cost of the program as confirmed by the board presentation. Although the fee amount should be determined separately, the requirement of a fee in the ordinance is imperative. Without this funding mechanism made clear in statute, the license could be left underfunded and ineffective in the coming years. Please include this key provision in the ordinance today. With the recent finding by the county that twenty percent of tobacco retailers in the unincorporated area illegally sold tobacco products to our kids, the need for this policy is not only necessary, but urgent. Please put the health of our kids over tobacco profits financed by youth addiction. Thank you.
Could you please state your name for the record?
My name is Alexa Warman and I'm with the American Heart Association.
Great, thank you. Our next caller is one eight two two. One eight two two.
Good afternoon. My name is Peggy Walker. I've written tobacco use prevention and education programs for schools throughout San Diego County and I strongly support this proposal. TRLs serve youth prevention because they deter stores from becoming a destination for kids who buy from the stores they know will sell to them. Kids know these stores from reputation, social media, and friends. In our San De Gito area in District Three, the city of Solana Beach has served as a TRL leader. There have been no store closures or revocation of licenses in Solana Beach, but the city's TRL serves to bring violators into compliance. Having a county TRL will provide region-wide commonality of language and regulatory practices, linking unincorporated areas of the county with cities like Solana Beach, El Cajon, Vista, and others with TRLs. These linked similar policies will be effective in limiting youth access to tobacco products so kids don't go to neighboring areas. And they will be helpful in interrupting initiation and use by young people. Regular compliance checks are crucial, so please ensure this is a priority. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next caller is three eight zero zero. Three eight zero zero.
Hi, my name is Barbara Gordon and I am in District Three. As the adult leader for a Hispanic youth group, I am concerned with the easy availability of the many tobacco products to use. One of the most effective potential uses of a TRL is to reduce the inequity in how tobacco products are marketed and sold in underserved communities. Evidence shows that these same communities have higher rates of tobacco use and increased health inequities. A strong TRL law provides a framework to monitor local tobacco retailers and it makes stores a healthier place for everyone to shop. It's essential for the success of a TRL to require licensed retailers to pay an annual fee, which can fund administration and enforcement activities such as store inspections and compliance checks pertaining to youth purchases. I respectfully request your consideration, a strong TRL as a policy intervention because of the continual health problems associated with tobacco use in our communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next caller is four six six five. Four six six five.
Chairman Cox, my name is Tom Bryant and I am the Executive Director and Legal Counsel of NATO, a national retail association with many member stores in San Diego County. NATO submitted written comments to the board, including the following. First, there are two pending federal lawsuits that should forestall any board action on the ordinance. This includes the lawsuit against ordinance 10647, which banned the sale of flavored smoking products, and the lawsuit against California Senate Bill 793, which banned most flavored tobacco products statewide. Second, California Congress and the Food and Drug Administration have responded with new laws and regulations that should be allowed to work to reduce tobacco product use before the county considers the ordinance. These actions have included the following. California raising the legal age to purchase tobacco products from eighteen to twenty-one and then Congress doing the same in December of 2019. In February 2020, the FDA banned the sale of hundreds of different flavored electronic cigarettes that utilize a removable cartridge or pod. Finally, the FDA required manufacturers to file pre-market tobacco applications by September 9, 2020, if they had introduced a tobacco product or electronic nicotine product after February 15 of 2007. This deadline for applications caused the removal of many tobacco products and electronic cigarette products from retailer shelves. If any ordinance is adopted, a provision that allows those tobacco products, which the FDA authorizes to be sold in stores, should be included in the ordinance. NATO provided sample language for this exception in its comment letter. Third, the ban is overbroad because the vast majority of high schoolers do not use any tobacco product as shown by the California Healthy Kids Survey of eleventh graders. Rather, the board should consider focusing on underage alcohol and marijuana usage because they are substantially higher among high school students because they drink and smoke marijuana at much greater rates than tobacco products. Fourth, prohibiting sales clerks under age twenty-one will cause adult employees who are eighteen to twenty years- to 20 years old to lose their jobs. California law specifically permits persons who are 18 to 20 to sell alcohol. For these reasons, we ask you to not proceed with the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is six five nine eight. Six five nine eight. And again, if we don't hear from you, we will come back to you. Our next caller is five five three seven. Five five three seven.
My name is Casey Strang with the San Marcos Prevention Coalition. In San Marcos, we have a societal norm, and that norm is that our neighborhood and community businesses don't sell drugs like alcohol or tobacco to minors. I would suspect that this norm is shared by many other communities and neighborhoods across our county. Unfortunately, some businesses still sell drugs to teens, and so a tobacco retail license or TRL is a vital tool to prevent teens from accessing tobacco products. As parents and youth advocates, working hard to set a good example for our kids, teaching them healthy habits and life skills so that they can be the most productive versions of themselves, only to find out that some permitted businesses in our community have a flippant disregard to laws against selling addictive and damaging drugs to teens is extremely frustrating. Sometimes it feels like we're swimming upstream. Preventing drug use is extremely hard when the permitted businesses in the community sell drugs to teens. If a business is permitted to sell a drug, like alcohol or tobacco in this case, they must be held to the highest standards. It is not enough just to cross our fingers and hope that they don't sell to our teens. We must have compliance checks, minor decoy operations, to ensure that the tobacco retailers aren't selling to our teens. Thank you very much for your great leadership on this issue.
Thank you. Our next caller is four six zero zero. Four six zero zero.
Hello, and good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Kay Coleman, and I am serving as the 2122 Volunteer State Lead Ambassador of the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network, or ACSCAN for short. I'm also a member of ACSCAN's National Board of Directors. I live in Encinitas, but most importantly, I am a cancer survivor, and I believe that smoking as a foolish teenager was the cause, or at least a major contribution, to my cancer diagnosis, and I worked tirelessly to keep that from happening to other people's kids. I'd like to voice my support for the ordinance to add and repeal provisions in the San Diego County Code regarding the sale of tobacco products in the unincorporated area of San Diego. I am pleased to see a minimum pack and price standard for tobacco products, establishing a minimum price for tobacco products as a strong provision in any comprehensive tobacco retailer licensing policy. When tobacco products are made more expensive, fewer people use tobacco, fewer initiate tobacco use, and more people quit tobacco use. Prohibiting coupon redemption and discounting maintains the intent of the ordinance to keep tobacco prices higher and out of the hands of youth. Tobacco-free pharmacies is a natural and necessary next step, and we are pleased to see it included in the ordinance. Tobacco products, which are still the leading cause of preventable death in California, should not be sold in pharmacies where residents seek health-promoting products. It is a contradiction for pharmacies to sell tobacco products alongside over-the-counter medications and prescription drugs. Youth often underestimate the dangers of tobacco use and mistakenly believe that some of these products are harmless. Selling tobacco products alongside approved cessation products creates additional confusion and helps to diminish the perceived hazards of tobacco use. We encourage you to require any new tobacco retailer to locate a minimum of 1,000 feet from any tobacco retailer. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next caller is seven nine seven eight. Seven nine seven eight.
Good afternoon, San Diego County Board of Supervisors. My name is Reema Corey. I'm General Counsel for Fumari, a premium hookah tobacco manufacturer in San Diego. I'm also a resident of Fallbrook and founding member of the National Hookah Community Association. Thank you for your consideration of hookah and its rich cultural significance by exempting it from the San Diego County Flavor Ban and TRL by mirroring the exemption language in the state's flavor ban SB 793. We commend and support your efforts with the proposed TRL, but request reconsideration of the restriction of online sales. The proposed TRL requires that all sales be onsite with no delivery or internet sale. Despite it being incredibly difficult to enforce this provision, the state of California passed SB 39 last year that regulates on sales, online sales, by requiring that online customers be verified as being 21 years or older through a third-party database and verifying that the billing address on the check or credit card offered for payment matches the address listed in the database. It also requires that all credit card statements include tobacco products listed in it, and after each sale, that a telephone call after 5:00 PM be made to the purchaser before shipment, and that all deliveries addresses matches the check or credit card used for payment and no post office deliveries. Every package of tobacco sent must be conspicuously labeled with, in capital letters, "contains tobacco products," signature of 21 years' age or older required for delivery, along with a signature before delivery. There are also civil penalties for violations that are $1,000 to $2,000 for first violation, $2,500 to $3,500 for the second violation, $4,000 to $5,000 for the third violation within five years, and $5,500 to $6,500 for the fourth violation within five years, and $10,000 for a fifth violation in a five-year period. Much like SB 793, I wanted to thank you and appreciate all your hard efforts.
Thank you. Our next caller is one zero nine four. One zero nine four.
Hello. My name is Julie Elkins, and I live and work in El Cajon. I am a pastor, a mother, and a grandmother. I am an American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network Ambassador, and I am also a two-time cancer survivor. I come from a family of cancer survivors and unfortunately, some who have lost their lives. We also have asthma, other breathing, and heart issues in my family, including myself. Smoke and tobacco products affect me pretty severely, along with my husband, my children, and my grandchildren. I was surprised to find out that my grandchildren are already, as young kids in school, being introduced to smokeless tobacco products that have flavors designed to hook them. 10% of users started before the sixth grade, 44% by the ninth grade, and 85% by the 11th grade. Early nicotine use is correlated with daily use and a lifelong nicotine addiction, and flavors in smokeless tobacco are specifically aimed at hooking kids such as my grandchildren. The U.S. Surgeon General found that tobacco companies use flavoring in smokeless tobacco as a part of a graduation strategy that encourages new users to start with flavored products with lower levels of nicotine and work their way up to more addictive products. I want to thank you for protecting our kids from a lifelong addiction to this deadly product by ending the sale of flavored smokeless tobacco and passing a very strong TRL for enforcement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next caller is eight six zero six.
Hi. I am calling in testimony for Jason Huntley, who was on the phone this morning and is unable to call back this afternoon. Jason says, "My name is Jason Huntley. I'm a parent of two sons, 19 and 13, a professional strength and conditioning coach with advanced certifications in health and nutrition coaching, owner and head of performance at Proteus Athletes, a family-owned training center where we work with hundreds of athletes and teens from around San Diego County, and a county resident in the city of Poway. I also volunteer for PAVE, Parents Against Vaping E. Cigarettes. Tobacco use among teenagers has skyrocketed in recent years with over 30% of high school kids currently using these products. Tobacco products kill millions of Americans each year, and virtually all smokers begin their lifelong nicotine addiction as teens. I've seen the vaping problem amongst teenagers getting out of hand. Even my own son, a two-sport athlete and a great student, has struggled with this, once trying it a few years ago with his fellow classmates and athletes at Poway High School. And this is only getting worse in the COVID isolation and distance learning experiment. Something has to be done immediately. I wholeheartedly support ending the sale of all flavored tobacco without exemptions and a tobacco retail license with annual fees on all retailers. I urge you on behalf of all families throughout San Diego County to support these measures to keep tobacco out of our kids' hands. Thank you in advance for taking this matter seriously here in San Diego. Thank you."
Could you please state your name for the record?
My name is Lori Bremner. I'm calling on behalf of Jason Huntley.
Great, thank you. Our next caller is nine zero nine seven. Nine zero nine seven. We see you have your hand raised, but you need to press star six to unmute yourself.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is George Johnson. I live and manufacture traditional hookah pipes in District Three. I'm a co-founder of the National Hookah Community Alliance, and I support a strong TRL and increased penalties. I support the 21 and up for all employees. This makes sense to me. What I do not agree with is online sales being banned. This is unenforceable, and since we are talking today about mirroring SB 793, why not mirror SB 39 from last year? Minimum prices also sets an undue burden on legally abiding businesses, having they compete with the other 18 municipalities that sell for much less. Density requirements. I have a question. What will be done with stores that are currently in violation of a not-yet-passed ordinance? Limiting the licenses to 330 being the exact amount in San Diego Incorporated prevents room for growth when the unincorporated areas seem to be the places where most growth would be happening? Please consider increasing the number of licenses by 20% and eliminating the restrictions on transfers. In addition, the non-transferable license cannot be passed down to a family within that business, which is often the case in Middle Eastern minority business owners. Prevention of acquisition of generational wealth is the description of institutionalized racism. We went through all this last year. Adding some more measures will be the last nail in the coffin of these legally owned businesses. Thank you for understanding the cultural significance of hookah, and I hope that you will only adopt the three things today: TRL, stringent penalties, and 21 and plus employees. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next caller is eight seven six eight. Eight seven six eight. Eight seven six eight. We will move on to six five nine eight.
Good afternoon. My name is Ray Abdullah and represent two stores in the unincorporated area. I strongly oppose adding provisions to Ordinance 10647. This measure would negatively impact our business and employees. This proposed ban would severely limit the choices of our adult consumers, and if adult customers cannot buy their preferred products in our stores, they will just go outside of the county to make their purchases. While there, they will also purchase gas, grocery items, and beverages. Our store depends on these sales, especially during these economical, uncertain, difficult times. Worse yet, prohibiting these products could shift sales from law-abiding retailers, like us, potentially illegal sources who do not check IDs. Reasonable regulations to keep tobacco products from getting into kids' hands. Retailers are the first line of defense when it comes to preventing kids from purchasing tobacco products. We will take this responsibility very seriously. Thank you, and you guys have a good day.
Thank you. Our next caller is two one five three. Two one five three. And again, if we don't hear from you, we will come back to you. Our next caller is one nine nine zero. One nine nine zero.
This is Mary. I'm a mom of teens and a resident of Carlsbad. The tobacco industry has long preyed on our youth, calling kids their replacement customers for the 500,000 people who die from tobacco products each year. Here's a quote from one tobacco industry document to illustrate why we need bold action from the board to enact the strongest protections for our kids. Quote, "Younger adult smokers have been the critical factor in the growth and decline of every major brand and company over the last 50 years. They will continue to be just as important to brands in the future for two simple reasons: The renewal of market stems almost entirely from 18-year-old smokers. No more than 5% of smokers start after the age of 24. Younger adult smokers are the only source of replacement smokers. If younger adults turn away from smoking, the industry must decline." End quote. "Allowing easy access to kid-friendly flavored tobacco products is the industry's latest attempt at luring kids into nicotine addiction. Getting young people hooked on these products with their enticing flavors and cool tech gadgets masks the real dangers. Please put our kids over tobacco profits by ending the sale of all flavored tobacco products without exemptions and enacting a strong tobacco retail license with annual fees for all retailers." Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is six five nine eight. Six five nine eight.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. This is Judy Strang, calling from District One, calling on behalf of San Diego Alliance for Drug-Free Youth. We're a nonprofit in the San Diego region that provides prevention activities for young people and prevention education for their parents and community members. We have had some experience in our area, our region, San Diego region, with tobacco ordinance work, and we wanted to share that with you because it has applicability to what you're considering today. One of our cities that does have a tobacco retailer's licensure has done and built great relationships with the tobacco retailers in the city, and when they do minor decoy and compliance inspections, our retailers understand that it's in the best interest of our community, and they are comfortable with it. And what we have found is that they like the idea of being found to be responsible tobacco retailers. We find that when our tobacco retailers are responsible, that it does eliminate youth access to tobacco products through retail sources, but it also reduces the regularizing that comes through social services, social sources, and it interrupts the normative messages that sometimes happens with tobacco retailers. We also had a second experience with another city that has a distance requirement for tobacco retailers from youth-sensitive areas, especially schools, and this became very important to San Diego Alliance and to our parents when a tobacco retailer moved within 1,000 feet of our high school and was also selling drug paraphernalia. Because we had this distance requirement, it not only protected our young people from walking along the neighborhood walkway that would have taken them in front of the tobacco retailer, but it removed the drug paraphernalia from the neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration and appreciate your comments today. Bye.
Thank you. And this is the final call for our caller with last four digits, two one five three. Two one five three. If you'd like to address the board, please press star six and unmute.
Hello. This is Kelly McCormick. I'm a resident of District Five, and I'm a parent of two teenagers, and I strongly support the proposed tobacco retailing licensing with no exemptions. If a retailer is truly doing nothing wrong, they have nothing to fear from this ordinance. It's far too easy for middle and high school students to purchase tobacco products. A study by the Truth Initiative found that 74% of teens who had used tobacco in the past month purchased their vape products in a retail store, and that is why I respectfully ask you to adopt this TRL. As parents, we are battling an industry that does everything it can to hook our kids. Fake devices are cheap and easy to conceal. Flavors mask the harshness of traditional tobacco and reduce the perception of harm, and nicotine salts are absorbed more- and nicotine salts are absorbed more easily into the bloodstream, which is why they were developed, to make the products more addictive. I support this move. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And that concludes public testimony on this item. Chairman Cox.
Very good. We want to thank all of the speakers this morning and this afternoon in regards to this item, and at this time, we'll open it up to a board discussion. Let me start with Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate all the comments today and all the effort put forward by our staff on this item. When I was mayor of San Marcos, we actually put in a tobacco regulation law and ordinance that, you know, very similar, where we collected fees annually. We also did inspections, and this paid for those inspections, and we got very good results in San Marcos as far as reducing underage tobacco use and tobacco products. But, you know, and I understand under Senate Bill seven ninety-three, we're already required, as of January one, to prohibit the retail sale of most flavored tobacco in California, so we're already under that obligation. I have some issues, though, with some of the items here, and they're kind of ambiguous and, to me, a bit of an overreach, and I'm looking at the benchmarking of TRL elements in California. It's one of the PowerPoint slides. You know, going across there, the TRL, many of these were amended at a point in time. I think if we go ahead with what's in front of us here, as far as establishing minimum pack size, establishing a number of entities that can sell, coupons and package size, I think we're going, you know, a bit beyond what the intention is, and that's to keep it out of the hands of kids. So, as I go on across this benchmarking chart, you know, youth-sensitive areas, I do think any new, you know, any new sales should be, you know, so many feet, whatever, a thousand feet or whatever it is, new businesses opening up away from schools or places where children congregate. The density or cap of, or that of licenses out there, the three-thirty cap, you know, these licenses can't be transferred, so I guess if a store does sell, then, what, we're down to three-thirty or three-hundred entities? Who is next in line? Who gets the opportunity to, you know, be the next store, be the three-hundred-and-thirty? I think that's a little bit cumbersome, so I don't support the cap at this point in time. The pharmacy ban, if the pharmacies want to ban sales, that's on them. I think that's great if they don't want to have them. The minimum pack size, I talked about, I thought was onerous. The coupons or multi-pack discounts or just the multi-packs, I think is above and beyond. The minimum age, you know, I can see the point for that, but then, you know, we lock out some people between eighteen and twenty from having the, those jobs. And then the e-devices ban, I think we already banned the e-devices here in San Diego County. So, I guess what I'd like to say is if we start from the basics, we put in a TRL, we make sure we have compliance, we make sure we do those, you know, the sweeps or tests, and then we keep it away from youth-sensitive areas. We can always amend this later, or a future board could amend this later. I just think it's kind of an overreach, so I would support a TRL that just keeps, you know, stays away from youth and has those fines in place. One thing that we did do in San Marcos is after, I think it was after three years, after three years, if you were, if your place was, your entity or your business did not have any infractions, that your annual fee was reduced. So, it went down. So, we rewarded good behavior. And then maybe instead of testing those every year, they were every other year because we had less resources, but we rewarded good behavior with decreased fees. So, as is, I can't support it, but I would support a scaled-down version of basic TRL instead of the other items in here. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor. Other comments? Supervisor Fletcher?
Yeah, I appreciate all of the comments that have been made from everyone that's come in. These issues certainly can be challenging. Look, we know we have an opportunity here. We covered it great length this morning, the presentation from our county staff about following best practices. Again, this doesn't go all the way to becoming compliant with American Lung Association recommendations. It's a step in the right direction. We've seen the tremendous positive impact in other jurisdictions that have seen up to forty percent reduction in teen smoking from doing similar type things, and so I believe we're on the right path. And again, you know, this is a product where everyone pays for its usage. I mean, you go back to those public health costs associated with this. Not only the lives impacted, we heard from parents, we heard from school folks, you know, the actions around teens, but the broader actions. And, you know, I'll just reiterate, three hundred million dollars a year in direct health costs associated with tobacco-related products. We've heard one of the largest contributors of preventable deaths, and this is something where, you know, one entity profits significantly off of something that the rest of society has to step up and pay for. And so I think for all of those reasons, the guidance for our public health experts, the incredible work that's been done, I would make a motion, Mr. Chair, to approve the recommendations and allow us to move forward. We have time down the road to evaluate the pieces, to take a look, what's working, what's not working, are there tweaks or changes or things that need to be made along the way, but I think we need to continue our progress forward and continue to take positive actions to help our public health situation. So, I'd make a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Jacob?
Yeah, I'll second that motion. Just a couple of comments. I appreciate all the speakers that have taken time to testify on this. We've heard a lot of testimony on this, both the first time it was before the board and then now. And just gauging some of what I've heard on both sides of this issue, that on each side, there's not a hundred percent happiness with the ordinance that's before us today. A lot of the people who support it want more. Opposition want nothing or want changes. I think all in all, we have an ordinance before us that Dr. Wooton and our staff have put a lot of time, a lot of effort into, over many months, looking at other jurisdictions and what they have adopted. I would agree, what's before us is not perfect, and it probably at some point in time will need some adjustment. And I would ask the maker of the motion at one point to put in there that this, into the motion, that this be evaluated in a year, and so it will automatically come back to the board and then take a look, and then we'll have a good, well, somebody will have a good idea where we are with the ordinance and whether there needs to be some changes in it. In other words, how it's working. Just because it's worked in Alameda County or the city of El Cajon or other jurisdictions doesn't mean that it's going to work the same in our unincorporated area. It is a different area, and it's very broad, but I think even though it's not perfect, it's something I would support today. I think there is absolutely no question, and there should be no question in anybody's mind, whether you're in favor of this ordinance or you're against the ordinance, that there are severe, very severe, public health effects from tobacco products. And particularly when the tobacco industry is targeting our youth, and there's clear evidence that the reason they're targeting the youth is because our youth become addicted at a very early age, and they're addicted for life. If you look at the overriding public health effects and you look at the cost for taxpayers, those two things alone, in my mind, are the overriding reasons to move forward in adopting this ordinance. I, for one, I would go further with it. I think tobacco products of all kinds are bad. Even though they're legal, they're bad, and I think that's been proven, there's evidence on the table of that. But I think, again, the best we have before us is the ordinance that staff put an awful lot of time into, and I think for us to rewrite the ordinance here at the board meeting today, that's not our purpose to do that. And if there are, again, minor adjustments to it, I think that could be made at a later date, and I would not object with that. So, if Supervisor Fletcher, if you put in your motion, this would come back to the board in a year for an evaluation, and at that time, perhaps potential changes depending on what we see in that year.
No, I would support that, Supervisor Jacob, and I think with anything you do that's new, it is important to come back, and I think the continued engagement with stakeholder and groups to evaluate the implementation and look at possible changes, tweaks, lessons learned, things we should do, and so I would support the addition of that, and I think it's a good addition, and I think with anything, you have to continue to work to make sure things are working, make sure they're doable, make sure the outcomes are what you want, and the impacts are proportional, and so I think that's an appropriate step, and be happy to add that to the motion.
Thank you.
Okay, so there's a modification to the motion made by Supervisor Fletcher, agreed to by the second or Supervisor Jacob. Supervisor Gaspar, you have some comments?
Thank you. Well, I think there's really good intent behind this TLR here today, and it's quite likely that everyone will walk away feeling really good about protecting San Diego's youth, and that's a real plus. Unfortunately, I want to point out that the TLR is likely to yield very small changes in youth use. Youth use is the real problem, and that's because retail stores are not the primary access point for youth in our communities. As a longtime youth sports coach and a mother of teens, I do a lot of listening, and if you really want to help our kids and not punish adults and businesses, policymakers need to start listening to our youth. If you take the time, you'll quickly learn that the greatest threat and access point is not our licensed retailers, it's in the cyberspace through apps like Snapchat. How many adults know about Plugs on Snapchat? Plugs are the new dealers to underage minors. They are of age. Now, they go on Snapchat, they access our kids by advertising to them by zip code. They quickly share pictures of their products, and they deliver messages back and forth with these teenagers that disappear in Snapchat land, and they quickly are able to deliver products to them within minutes. No place is safe. These plugs deliver to homes, to parks, and even schools. Immediate attention must be paid working with the federal government, who oversees the FCC, to crack down on this thriving underground industry that's killing our kids. But yet, we are doing nothing in this area, and that's entirely unacceptable, and this needs to change today. Last year, I was invited to the White House for the historic signing of the Human Trafficking Victims Protection Act. The federal government committed to investing in a large-scale effort through the FCC to crack down in the cyberspace. I want to point out to you, the same space that's marketing this THC, tobacco products, you name it, to our kids is also marketing and selling children for sex. So, I respectfully request that whatever happens with this ordinance today, that we quickly invest some time and attention and perhaps work through our legislative program, but we actively need to seek out ways to work with the federal government because they're in control of the FCC. And if you really want to protect our kids and you really want to effectively reduce access to our kids, then do something that's meaningful. It needs to happen at the federal level, too. I appreciate Supervisor Desmond's comments today on some of the problematic areas that are part of this TRL. One thing that I'm not certain that he mentioned was the prohibition on delivery internet sales for the unincorporated area. Now, when sales are made online with these retailers, it requires a signature of someone of age at the delivery point, and I am all for beefing up enforcement on that signature. I think that's very necessary. But I want you to think about functionally what you're doing by putting this into place in the unincorporated area, because you are literally pitting our unincorporated businesses, putting them at a disadvantage against city-based businesses, where those retailers can sell online, they can have delivery. So, it's not going to change access to the unincorporated area, because now people will just make their purchases through the city. So, again, that's a problem. The minimum pricing has been brought up, the moratorium's been brought up, the clerks who sell to be twenty-one. Please understand, many of these businesses are family businesses, and if you look at the age that an eighteen-year-old, they can serve and sell alcohol in a restaurant, it seems very consistent that an eighteen-year-old can sell products in the store. This is putting some of our family-owned businesses at a disadvantage. Supervisor brought up the minimum pricing, pack sizing, that sort of thing. So, at the end of the day, I really do support starting with the basics on this TRL. I would have liked to have seen that. I love what the supervisor had to say about rewarding good behavior. I think that's really important, too. So, those are my comments, and thank you.
Okay, additional comments?
I have a question, I guess, of staff, and it really revolves around the issue of minimum age for sales clerks. On the one hand, I guess I understand, you know, having a requirement to be twenty-one to sell tobacco, if they can only purchase at age twenty-one, makes sense, but my understanding is that clerks in a store, can they sell alcohol at age eighteen to individuals that are over twenty-one? Can anybody on staff respond to that?
I believe that is correct, Supervisor Cox, in terms of alcohol sales.
Yeah, I guess that's, you know, there's, this is not a perfect ordinance, but I tell you, I think by and large, I support the efforts that are going here, and it just seems like, you know, we just dealt with an item a little while before this morning in regards to youth involvement, and, you know, when you have inconsistencies, it really kind of bothers me, and I just, I wonder if the maker of the motion and the second of the motion would agree just to be consistent with, if you can sell alcohol at eighteen to people that are twenty-one and over, if they would accommodate the same, make the same accommodation for the sale of tobacco products. I mean, the problem I see is, you know, kids right now are trying to get jobs in restaurants and mom-and-pop stores, and it's hard enough as it is now, and I think it really pretty much precludes them, because who's going to hire somebody that they have to pull off or bring somebody else on if somebody wants to buy tobacco, but they could do that at age eighteen for alcohol?
Chairman Cox, I have a response if I could.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, sure, absolutely.
Regarding the age of the clerk, state law allows clerks under twenty-one years of age to sell alcohol in stores during the day. From ten PM to two AM, clerks under twenty-one cannot sell alcohol for off-site consumption.
For what hours?
Between the hours of ten PM and two AM, clerks under twenty-one years of age cannot sell alcohol for off-site consumption.
Well, I would think, you know, if we could have a consistent type of application where that's true after ten PM to two AM, but prior to that time, you know, they'd be able to have some consistent regulations in regards to the sale of tobacco products and alcohol.
Mr. Chair, can I get clarification on one point? I believe that those individuals under twenty-one doing alcohol sales have to be under the supervision of someone on staff who is over twenty-one. Is that understanding correct? I don't know if someone on our public health team knows.
We will check to get that clarification, but in addition, though, I wanted to add that when you have someone that is less than twenty-one years of age, which is the current legal age for using tobacco, those younger individuals might be pressured to sell to their underage peers, so that's another rationale for why the age is stated at or set at twenty-one.
Well, I imagine that pressure would also apply to sale of alcohol products, and obviously the owners of the businesses, and if there's a requirement that there be somebody that is supervising, I don't have a problem with that, too, as long as we're consistent. consistent, uh, with the way that we, we apply it. But I, I would think the same pressure was, it would be there, and, and, you know, if the, the state wants to step in and, and change it, uh, for sale of alcohol, that's, that's fine. I just think we need to have some consistency in the way that this is applied.
So Supervisor Cox, uh, the legal, well, 18 is a legal age for drinking, 21 is a legal age for using tobacco. So again, or is it 21 is the legal age for drinking and alcohol, sorry? But again, that's why we included age 21, because it's a legal age for tobacco use. And I understand about the consistency for the sales, but we are trying to decrease the access for, uh, youth. So that's why the age is set at 21 years of age.
Dr. Wooton, just for clarification, did you say with alcohol?
It was, uh... 21 for both alcohol and, and the utilization age is 21 for both alcohol?
What I thought I heard you say, though, for alcohol, it, it was under 21 for on-site consumption.
So between the age, between the times of, uh, 10:00 PM and, uh, 2:00 AM, it cannot be sold by individuals that are less 21, that are less than 21 years of age for off-site consumption?
Off-site, tobacco products would be off-site. You're not going to buy a pack of cigarettes and smoke them right there in the store.
Nope. I was being asked about alcohol, so that's the law related to alcohol.
I understand, but again, uh, the chairman is trying to be consistent here, and if we're going to be consistent, it, the on-site consumption of alcohol and the on-site consumption of tobacco products would be very different. So if we're going to be consistent, how would you be consistent? Like you wrote the ordinance, or how?
Well, our recommendation is to, uh, comply, well, to utilize the, uh, age set at 21 years of age.
All right, but if you're, if you're not consuming on-site alcohol, what's the age? If you're consuming alcohol off-site, what's the age then you can purchase? You can sell it?
You could not be less than 21 years of age. You have to be 21 years of age or older at the time period that I stated if the alcohol is consumed off-site.
Okay, that, that's what I was trying to get at. So it's 21 for a person to be able to sell an alcoholic beverage, let's say in a store, you have to be 21 to sell alcohol, to drink the alcohol off-site. So why wouldn't you be 21 to sell a tobacco product if you're consuming the tobacco product off-site?
That would be consistent.
I think that the issue is, if you're 18, let's say you, you're a family member that works in a, in a small grocery store, or you're a, you know, kid in high school or going to college, it's between 18 and 21. Right now, you could work in a, in a, in a store and sell alcohol up till 10:00 PM, uh, to people that are of legal age of 21, but under this ordinance, you'd be able to do the same thing with tobacco products.
Chairman Cox, I wanted to provide clarification to the question that you asked about the 18-year-old who sells, do they need to be supervised? And they indeed do need to be supervised by a 20, an individual 21 years of age, uh, or older to sell alcohol.
Okay, and I'm perfectly happy to have the same rules apply here. It just seems like it would be better to be consistent.
Ms, Ms, Mr. Chair, I think, I think my understanding of, of what Dr. Wooton just said is that if we say we want to be consistent, if you're selling alcohol to be consumed off-site, meaning you're going to purchase it and get in your car and leave, you have to be 21. And so the 18, 19, 20-year-old serving alcohol is only for on-site consumption only before 10:00 PM, and they still have to be supervised. And so the, the point I think Supervisor Jacob was making is that you don't sell tobacco products retail for on-site consumption. I mean, I guess perhaps in a cigar bar or something like that, but outside of that, most of these are sold at retail establishments. So if we were going to be consistent with what has just been outlined, forces the rules around alcohol, you wouldn't be able to sell tobacco products for off-site consumption unless you're 21, because you can't sell alcohol for off-site consumption unless you're 21.
Correct.
So it, it wouldn't, so we, we, hey, Mr. Chair, we, we could say we would be consistent, but it would really have no impact, um, unless there is some place that allows you to smoke the cigarette in the convenience store. Right? I mean, may, maybe...
Nobody, nobody buys something in a, a convenience store, alcohol or tobacco, and consumes it in the convenience store, so I'm assuming all of you...
You have to be 21 in order to sell alcohol in that setting. The, the, the under 21, as Dr. Wooton just outlined, the under 21 to sell alcohol only applies if it is consumed on-site before 10:00 PM.
So, uh, I have additional information if, if I may, uh, the California alcohol laws, age to consume 21, age to pour 21, age to sell, it is 18 until 10:00 PM. Employees on duty between the hours of 10:00 PM and 2:00 AM who sell beer or wine for off-premise consumptions shall be at least 21 years of age to sell beer and wine. And then the age to serve, if you're in a restaurant, is 21 effective, uh, it was effective, uh, 2009, January 1, 2009. So those are the current California alcohol laws.
Let, let me see if I, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, let, let me see if I can confuse this even more. Uh, so with the understanding that there is a difference with alcohol consumption on-premises versus tobacco consumption on-premises. Dr. Wooton, if we were to say in the ordinance, make the tobacco rules the same as the alcohol rules, what effect would that have on the ordinance?
Supervisor Jacob, we would have to look at that, because smoking, uh, uh, we have no smoking laws in, in our restaurants now, uh, in most restaurants, I, I would say. Uh, we would have to do the analysis of that. I don't think that it's a cut and clear, uh, decision that we can make right now. Smoking and, and, and consuming alcohol are really two different things.
But, but from the, from, from the information that we have received, in order to make them consistent, since all of these sales are going to be off-premises, my understanding from what we have said is that an 18-year-old could sell the, the tobacco products, provided there is a 21-year-old person supervising, uh, up, up until the time of 10:00 PM, and from 10:00 PM until 2:00 AM, that person selling, doing the sales off, off-premises sales would have to be, uh, 21 years or older. And so if you wanted to make this ordinance, if you want to make the ordinance consistent with that, you would have to, uh, you would have, you would have to limit the, the application of the 21-year-old standard to the hours of 10 to 2, but you would also have to add a requirement that the, that the person who is making those sales during the day has somebody over 21 years old who is supervising them.
And, and that would be consistent with how alcohol is, is dealt with by convenience stores and establishments that are selling for off-site consumption?
That is my understanding from the information that I've been provided.
Okay, and that would be, that was really the only concern I have with this, is just, I think there needs to be some consistency. I think the other thing is that I, I know Alcohone has, has their ordinance, but it seems to me, the issues that have been raised about, in fact, we're only dealing in the unincorporated area, uh, i- if we, we get something we can agree upon, I would hope that we would reach out to the other, uh, well, even Alcohone, uh, to all 18 cities to see if there could be some consistent application. I realize they have their own abilities to modify and, and do whatever they want in their cities, but if we're really going to attack this as a, as a significant public health issue, and I think it is, and I support, uh, I think the balance of the items that are included in the, uh, in the ordinance, uh, I, I think we need to try to get all 18 cities on board, and I do think, you know, that there ought to be some consistency. I'm looking at a, you know, uh, so, somebody that's 19 years old that works in a convenience store, and I won't mention any by name, but, uh, they can, they can sell alcohol to somebody up until 10:00 PM, but if the same person comes in and buys alcohol and, and cigarettes, they can't. And I just think that's a job limitation that shouldn't be there, and if there's a desire in the state legislature to later make modi- modifications, then so be it. I would be willing to, to go along with it then. It just seems like it's, it's limiting employment opportunities for, for young people, and I, I don't want to see us do that any more than we, um, have to.
Mr. Chairman, I think what we could do is we could ask staff to include the language that counsel just outlined, and then have that br- bring, brought back at the second reading, because I understand we're going to have to have a second reading anyway, if that's okay with the maker of the motion.
Supervisor Jacob, what we have to do is, uh, if we're going to make the change, we have to make a change right now. So I have recommended language that I would add to the ordinance right now, so that you would then be able to approve it in a second reading, and that would be in section 21.2603 subdivision I. The language should be minimum clerk age, no tobacco retailer may permit a person such as an employee under the legal minimum age to purchase, handle, or sell tobacco products without supervision of a person 20 years or older, and never between the hours of 10:00 PM and 2:00 AM.
Mr. Chair, I, I would, I would reluctantly accept that, uh, because I have to, because we have to keep it moving. Uh, I would point out, though, that alcohol impacts and addictive nicotine tobacco products are fundamentally different things, and I would also reluctantly amend it to have teenagers sell tobacco products, uh, which is what we're doing. Now, if that's what we need to do to move it forward, then that, that's what we need to do to move it forward. So, uh, with reservation and out of a obligation to keep this moving forward, I, I would accept it. Um, I, I don't feel it's a, a necessarily good policy to have teenagers selling tobacco products, uh, and I think there's a fundamental difference between the addictive nature of nicotine and tobacco products and alcohol sales, but, uh, if that's what keeps it moving, then the rest of it's worth it, I suppose.
As the second of the motion, I can count to three.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Vice Chairman Desmond.
Well, in, in, in the, uh, spirit of, of consistency, you know, one of the things i- in this with the density or the cap of 330 stores that can sell, um, and the license is non-transferable, my understanding is that in a liquor store, if you sell a liquor store, you can transfer that license, whereas here, you cannot. And there's, you know, many Middle Eastern folks that own these convenience stores that pass it on to the family, and if they do that, and it's a sale to a father, to a son, or to a daughter, or whatever, they're not able to do that with the way this is written. So I think there's some very, um, uh, problematic issues with having the 330 cap. I think it's a, um, uh, I, I, I think that's problematic as well. So I would like to see if you're looking for consistency with, with the alcohol effort, uh, this would be one as well, that, that there, maybe there's a cap of 10% or there's a cap, but there's got to be some way you can pass your store on to your family and maybe keep this license, or the license stays with it. I, I just think that's very problematic, having this cap of 330 and the license is non-transferable. I, I'd like to see the license be transferable, uh, maybe within family members or something to that effect. If you sell it outside the family, no, but maybe if that, I don't know, if the maker of the motion would be okay with that, to keep it in the family, um, I think this would be, um, detrimental to family business.
I, I think Supervisor Desmond, uh, we have plenty of time. We're, we're not at a point where we've hit the cap, we're not at a point where we've even adopted it, we've already called for an annual review of it. Uh, I think that's a fair point, uh, that we will have plenty of time, uh, in the future to try and address, uh, once we get it up and, and set up and running. I also think it would be problematic to try and amend that from the dais, we're not even defining what a family is, we're going to get into the legal composition and structure of an LLC versus a sole proprietorship versus an S corp. Uh, so I, I think that would probably be a, a good issue to address.
There's already 330. We are at the cap. That's how many retailers there are in the unincorporated area right now. So that's, we are, we are at the cap, so none are going to be at it. And, and I think that's, um, pro- very problematic. I'd like to see that, this whole thing taken out, and maybe we come back and tweak that later as, as opposed to having it in place now.
Mr. Chairman, about four hours ago, I brought up this issue, and I asked the question to counsel, and, and the answer was, is how an individual would form their businesses as to whether, their business as to whether or not they could pass it on to a family member, pass the license on to a family member. So the onus is more on the business owner and how they have put their business together as to whether they could pass it on or not. I, I for one, I don't think we should be tinkering with this ordinance anymore today. I think that can be and will be evaluated, and it can be into the future evaluated. So let's, let's first see how it works. I think we all agree, it's not perfect, but it's a step in the right direction. And, and the last thing I'd say, to compare everything with the way the law allows for alcohol sales and use compared to tobacco, to me, is very, very different. Uh, alcohol is a different type of a commodity than tobacco, and there's different reasons that we are targeting the tobacco issue, and it, remember, it's because of the access to youth, the addiction to youth, and the detrimental effects to people's health, and let's not forget the over $300 billion cost of taxpayers. The taxpayers are on the hook for all of this and the costs that we incur just because of tobacco products. You can't make the same statement about alcohol, so I don't think it, it's a good comparison to go into every law that affects alcohol and then just transfer it over to tobacco products. I think that is a much deeper discussion, and that, I think, should be held at another time, not now.
Okay, we're not comparing...
Vice Chairman Desmond?
Well, I just, you know, we're not comparing everything between tobacco and alcohol, and so it was stated a couple times, and that's not true.
Any other comments? Okay, uh, Mr. Clerk, do you want to kind of restate the motion as it's been modified?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The motion is, uh, to adopt the recommendations with the modification that was read into the record by county council on section 21.2603I regarding age for sales of tobacco and return to the board in one year for evaluation and consider potential amendments at that time.
Any further discussion? That was clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With that motion, this item introduces an ordinance adding and repealing provisions in the San Diego County Code regarding the sale of tobacco products in the unincorporated area in San Diego County. With that, Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Jacob?
Aye.
Supervisor Gaspar?
No.
Supervisor Fletcher?
Fletcher, aye.
Vice Chairman Desmond?
I just want to note that I am against underage children, underage people having access to tobacco, but I'm a no.
Mr. Chairman, that motion passes with Vice Chairman Desmond and Supervisor Gaspar voting no, all other supervisors being present and voting aye.
Okay, we'll move on now to items six and seven. We're going to have, uh, a presentation on both of those, but I think staff is going to do the presentation on both of them together. Item six is to receive an update on advancing the behavioral health continuum of care, an annual update on drug-medical organized delivery system, and item seven is to approve the Mental Health Services Act three-year program and expenditure plan for fiscal years 2021 through 2022, 23. And to get us started on this, again, our, um, acting director of the Health and Human Services Agency Dean, and I'll get it right one of these times, Erebatzus, I hope that's close.
Thank you, Chairman Cox, and that was perfect, and, uh, thank you, Chairman Cox, and the members of the board. Today, we will be presenting on item six and seven, which will provide an update on the behavioral health continuum of care, the drug-medical organized... organized delivery system, and Mental Health Services Act funds. At this time, we'll turn it over to Dr. Luke Bergman, Director of Behavioral Health Services. Luke?
Thanks, Dean. As we've noted in recent updates to your board, with budgetary pressure and uncertainty about the future shape of the COVID pandemic and its impacts on hospitals, BHS, Behavioral Health Services, has partially pivoted from a focus on integrated behavioral health hubs in collaboration with healthcare partners, which have involved significant capital investments and planning administrative resources. While I'm pleased to announce that some of this work has been restarted, especially our collaborations with UCSD and Rady Children's Hospital, I'll be reporting today on work that reflects a different set of strategic emphases, but one still designed to move the behavioral health continuum away from episodic crisis care and towards continuous engagement and care management. The areas of focus for our work and our key investments fall into three categories: care coordination, diversionary services, and long-term care. These areas are the optimal domains for higher yield and engagement and outcome with lower overall investment, for getting more with less, and each is oriented around helping mainstream healthcare manage its efforts in the midst of the pandemic. As I talk through some of our specific areas of work, I'll show them plotted along a milestone timeline. The county, UCSD, and other partners continue to refine, for example, a joint venture care coordination service, and are on target to make it operational before the end of the current fiscal year. The service will proactively link people in inpatient psychiatric care with a care coordinator who will stay connected to them and advocate and plan care for them into the future. We've begun preliminary design work for the care coordination component of the children's behavioral health hub as well. While operations at Tri-City Medical Center psychiatric health facility won't begin for a couple of years, OSHPOD review of construction documents should begin by the end of this calendar year. And we look forward to care that is linked into and organized around our care coordination efforts. Among diversionary services, the county has made significant investments in crisis stabilization units, with two hospital-based services in North and South County, and two community-based services, both in North County, either up and running or in planning and development, with all anticipated to be operational by the end of this fiscal year. In the current moment, such services are especially critical because they not only ensure that those with behavioral health crises are getting the most appropriate ongoing care, they can also help manage patient flow and emergency departments that are vulnerable to surge. Development of the North Coastal Non-Law Enforcement Mobile Crisis Response Team, or MCRT, is in progress, with an NOI issued yesterday and contract execution anticipated next week. In addition, on June 23rd of this year, your board approved a recommendation to fully fund an expedited rollout of MCRTs countywide. Development of additional teams is underway through collaborative planning with multiple local law enforcement entities. In the last few months, behavioral health has been especially active with investments in long-term care. The Lakeside Special Treatment Program is a secured 24-hour skilled nursing facility with a program for those with serious mental illness. On September 4th, 2020, behavioral health expanded capacity for medical enrollees by 29 additional beds, bringing the total number of beds so designated to 69. Augmented Service Programs, or ASPs, provide services to individuals with serious mental illness who are in licensed residential care or board and care facilities. To improve the board and care business case for medical enrollees and to ensure that this key long-term option is available as part of our continuum, behavioral health is more than doubling rates for ASPs by the end of fiscal year 2020, 21, 2021. As a complement to these investments, Behavioral Health Services executed a contract with Alvarado Hospital's Senior Care Specialty Services, a 30-bed geriatric behavioral health unit. Finally, we are optimistic that the Behavioral Health Impact Fund, with initial contracts executed toward the beginning of calendar year 21, will enable us to add to the long-term care options and overall capacity within our communities. Continuum. This brief review of some of the current activities of our continuum of care work reflects a shift in emphasis for the moment, but not a change in plans. As we segue into a discussion of our substance use disorder treatment system, or what we call the Drug-Medical-Organized Delivery System, DMC, in this presentation henceforward, we're in the midst of a similar interlude, where our long-range focus is steadfast, even though we're making some immediate-term adjustments to address emergent issues and take advantage of new opportunities. As we've noted in recent updates to the board, both local and national indices of behavioral health and well-being show that we are in a very serious mental health and substance use crisis right now, with increased rates of anxiety and rates of severe depression five times higher than normal. And among local data, those that are most concerning, with suicide rates holding steady, reflect harmful substance use. I've recently presented a version of this slide, but want to again call attention to the alarming number of overdose deaths that we've seen in this county in recent months, a near doubling over the months preceding the pandemic, with rates of fentanyl-involved overdose death, which are shown in orange here, nearly triple the rate of a year ago. These are on top of what has been a steady increase locally in accidental overdose deaths over the past 10 years, and in the context of alarming new data from the CDC, showing a 20% increase in California in overdose deaths from last year. Across the nation, in the midst of this deadly pandemic, we are on track to lose 75,000 lives this year to overdose. It's with these population health data in mind that we need to estimate how, through this pandemic, the county contracted substance use disorder treatment system is doing. As I've reported previously, the county's treatment providers have shifted impressively to telephonic and telehealthcare modalities. Prior to COVID, 97% of services were delivered face-to-face, and only 3% by telephone or through telehealth. By August, approximately 75% of adult outpatient services were provided either through telehealth, represented here by the orange bars, or over the telephone, represented here by the yellow bars. And after a sudden and massive loss to care in March, we're encouraged to see some improvement, with total contacts increasing from March till September by around 25%. And with each week, we are seeing more and more telehealth relative to simple telephone contact. It's our contention that the investments that this board has made over the last few years in the addiction care system for medical enrollees is a key to that, and to other positive developments in the treatment system as Today, we're pleased to present an update on the improvements in substance use disorder treatment made possible by DMC, and to highlight how DMC has helped carry us through the COVID-19 pandemic during a time when seamless and robust substance use disorder treatment services are desperately needed. We've previously presented DMC updates through three lenses: care volume, clinical quality, and financial investments. We've just reviewed at a high level the impact that the pandemic has had on encounter volume within the DMC system. With these reductions in encounters and the overall shift to remote care that may have different, if not diminished, results, the components of the system that knit it all together, and that are designed to help people stay connected and engaged in care, have been particularly important. Critical among these are the substance use case management services newly established with the rollout of the DMC that improve linkages and continuity across levels of care. By the end of DMC year two, 66% of unique clients received case management services, a 50% improvement from the previous year. Improvements in care continuity and thus care efficiency reflect one way that the DMC system continues to evolve toward economic sustainability. Through its second year, your board invested over $140 million of federal, state, and county revenues into DMC programs. And as of August 2020, 100% of facilities had met certification requirements for medical billing, which is a key step in the long-term viability of our community-based providers. While the COVID pandemic has been challenging for our programs in terms of service volumes, there have been areas of remarkable growth in clinical quality. Among opioid treatment programs in particular, which offer medication for addiction, novel regulatory flexibility has accelerated trends in more individualized and effective care. I'd now like to hand it over to Dr. Nicole Esposito to share some of these details and to highlight future areas of focus.
With overdose deaths, with overdose death rates on the rise in the community, the availability of medications for addiction has never been more important. Medications such as methadone and buprenorphine are extremely effective at reducing the risk of overdose death. During the pandemic with new regulatory relief, the opioid treatment programs have ensured that patients have continuity of service by increasing access to take-home medications. This ensures that stable patients can remain in the safety of their homes, which is particularly important for patients at high risk for COVID. The monthly take-home average, in fact, increased from 57% of patients prior to the pandemic to 74% in the months following the onset of the pandemic. In addition to providing increased take-home medications, opioid treatment programs continue to make improvements by tailoring care for individualized needs and patient preference. Prior to DMC, the only medication option was methadone. However, with DMC new options such as buprenorphine are available, this medication is preferred by many because it is available by prescription and in the primary care setting. The number of people enrolled in opioid treatment programs receiving buprenorphine increased by 84%, and buprenorphine encounters increased by 90% over the last fiscal year. As more patients receive medications that can be prescribed in the primary care setting, there's an added benefit, that opioid treatment programs can have greater access to new patients. I want to conclude this section with a brief reference to service patterns among young people, which will be, which will need to be an area of particular focus for us looking forward, especially because of the social and logistical significance of remote learning. This graph shows all encounter data from adolescents, among whom there has been a 61% drop in service volume compared with a 24% drop among adults. BHS has been working diligently and continuously with our substance use disorder provider network that serves adolescents to provide technical assistance. Training tools and modules have been disseminated to ensure communication and awareness that substance use disorder services continue to be accessible, even though many schools are closed. And we maintain our focus on the community's youngest children, in an effort to address addiction risks before they become harmful, for example, through work on adverse childhood experiences or ACEs and precision medicine. We are currently in a shifting landscape, and we must look at all opportunities to optimize our funding and resources to sustain critical behavioral health services. I'd like to now turn it over to Amy Thompson, Acting Executive Finance Director for HHSA, to provide an overview of the Mental Health Services Act expenditures, flow of funds, and forecasting, along with some other resource challenges that we are facing in the near term.
Thank you, Dr. Esposito. So on this slide, we have the MHSA flow of funds, which may look familiar to some as we've presented a similar version in the past. It lays out the spending of these dollars over the last several years, including the actual revenue received, the available reserve in any given year, and what we forecast in the coming years. To anchor you to the chart, please note that the red line on top represents spending, the green line represents revenue receipts, and the dashes are representing our current projections. And then in the bottom, the bars in blue reflect the available reserves at the end of any given fiscal year, including the state's required prudent reserve. For fiscal year 2020, 21, planned MHSA expenditures are $194 million, comprising roughly a quarter of behavioral health services budget. As you'll notice, this is a decrease from last year. This does not reflect a reduction in MHSA services, but rather a reduction in the use of MHSA dollars due to leveraging increased federal medical revenue. This is due partly to additional federal medical dollars made available during the pandemic. Per board direction, you'll see that we have been steadily investing and spending down available reserves each year, as we spend more annually, looking at the line in red, than our receipts in green show. However, this current trajectory is not sustainable. Given the latest statewide projections reflecting the downturn in the economy, we expect that the remaining unspent MHSA funds, including the prudent reserve funds, will be almost fully exhausted by fiscal year 2022, 23. BHS continues to work diligently to identify mitigation strategies to address the anticipated decrease of MHSA revenues, and to maintain continuity of essential services going forward. I'll now turn it back over to Dr. Bergman to discuss some of those strategies.
Thank you, Amy. We've spent $1.5 billion of MHSA funds since its inception, and MHSA has been a critical source of funding for some of our most successful and impactful programs, including Project One for All, Treatment Services for Children, outpatient services, and as a matching fund for federal drawdown in crisis stabilization units, as well as funding to ensure that there is a behavioral health workforce in the future through specialized training and academies. In light of these economic forecasts and to maintain continuity of essential services going forward, Behavioral Health Services continues to work diligently to identify short, mid, and long-term mitigation strategies to address the anticipated decrease of MHSA revenues and the new challenges resulting from COVID-19. Some of these include using MHSA prudent reserve funds and unspent innovation funds if needed, ongoing advocacy for the flexible use of funds between MHSA components, optimizing medical drawdown to ensure maximum availability of MHSA funding, continuing intensive evaluations of BHS programs to ensure optimal service delivery, maximum efficiency, and best outcomes. While the road ahead is not totally certain, the implementation of this MHSA three-year plan supports our efforts to transform the behavioral health continuum from when driven by perpetual crisis to when driven by preventative and continuous care. Today's recommended actions are that you receive the updates on advancing the behavioral health continuum of care and on the implementation of DMC ODS, approve the DMC ODS intergovernmental agreement, and that you accept and approve the MHSA three-year program and expenditure plan for fiscal years 2020, I'm sorry, 2020, 21 through 22, 23. And that's it. Thank you for your time. We'll now take any questions that you may have.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Bergman. And Vice Chairman Desmond, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Great telling report here. It's kind of scary. Dr. Luke, I have a question on the adolescence behavioral healthcare bar chart that you had there. I don't know what number it was, if it's possible to pull that back up.
Sure. I think that that was slide number 10.
I don't know, you were too quick for me.
Well, we like to go fast.
That's it. Thank you. I guess when I first, at first glance on this, it looks like it's, we're getting better in that the amount of adolescent substance abuse is, looks like it's getting less. But what is this chart telling us? And you say this is, it's worse because we have less face-to-face, or what is it? I didn't quite understand what this chart meant.
Sure. So this is a, this is a chart measuring the volume of encounters, so how many treatment service encounters we're seeing among adolescents. And, you know, generally, it could be interpreted that fewer encounters might reflect less need. We know that that's not the case in the current context. We know that there is ongoing and very likely increased need because of everything that we're hearing about with respect to the pandemic, but in particular because we've seen this really sudden decrease in volume, which we frame as a loss to care. That downward trend that you see, we can equate to folks who need care not getting it.
And they're not getting, primarily because of the lockdown, or because they're not in school, or what's the?
So that's a really great question. There is certainly some relevance of the seasonal calendar and school and what we're seeing here. It's difficult for us in the current moment, just given the time of year that we're in, to fully suss that out. You know, and given remote learning and sort of variable engagement and institutional setting learning, it's going to be a challenge for us to kind of fully abstract that impact. But I would say, and our team generally feels irrespective of that, given that we've seen a 24% drop in volume among adults and a much more dramatic volume drop among young people, it's something that is really important for us to focus on, which is sort of the gist of our message with respect to this slide, is that we know this is where there's been particular loss to care, and so this is where we need to pay particular attention to re-engaging folks into care.
Well, and I guess if you overlay the overdose and deaths in San Diego County, the overdose and deaths all start in that March, I mean, the increases start in March, April, May, June, July, August, where, so if you overlay that chart on top of, there's fewer getting the care, then I guess that's a telling story. I just had a quick question for you. On the medically assisted treatment On the, on the medically assisted treatment programs, we had a meeting several months ago about the mat in Oceanside, and there was another mat in San Diego, in the city of San Diego that was having neighborhood issues. Can you tell us where we are with, or what efforts have been done, and if it's getting, I haven't heard any more complaints, but I'm, so I'm assuming it's getting better, getting better, but can you address those mats and the neighborhood issues they were having?
Sure. Well, it is always true that no news is good news. So we are actually presenting to, to your board a memo that updates that work. I think that that is coming to, coming back to the board, actually, very soon. So, so you will have a document that gives you a fleshed-out update with respect to all of that information. Supervisor Desmond, I can, I can tell you that we are making, that we are making progress. What we've been doing, what we've been devoting most of our time to is the establishment of agreed-upon metrics for success, that both treatment providers and, and neighborhood constituents agree make, makes sense. We've been in pretty intensive contact with your office over the course of that as well to keep, to keep folks apprised.
Well, I look forward to that report. And Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to accept the staff's recommendations on item six.
Okay, would that be on items six and seven, since I think they included that in there?
Yes, yes, that would. Thank you.
All right. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion. Mr. Chair, I just want to add some, some brief comments. Dr. Bergman, thank you to you and your team. We know the work as outlined in flipping that pyramid from crisis care to community care, and breaking that relentless cycle of poverty, addiction, mental health injury, restrictive care or incarceration, back out on the street, back into that, that perpetual cycle of crisis, a crisis situation, restrictive care, back out on the streets is, is going to be challenging and difficult. And I think we have taken considerable steps forward in putting in place the foundational pieces we need. The regional behavioral health hubs, the increase in services, the Behavioral Health Impact Fund, the mobile crisis response teams, the care coordination joint venture, the data work that's being done, the levels of care, all of those things. But we also know we have a considerable way to go, and, and we have, you know, a series of challenges that we have to continue to work through, not the least of which is the funding mechanisms. We know with the Calain process and various waivers, those have been delayed a little bit, and so we're going to have to continue to be very creative, we're going to have to continue to be very persistent to not allow these things to just drag out and drag out in order to push and build the system that we want. And so I appreciate the work that's been, been done, and I remain fully committed to, to continuing to work aggressively to tackle all of those pillars of challenges we face, from the levels of available care to the continuity between systems, obviously to our mobile crisis response teams, our workforce issues, our data issues, our reimbursement issues, all of those things. And I think San Diego County is going to be in a position where we can truly be a national leader on this issue. I think when we get aligned and, and further investment and commitment from us as a county, working closely with our leaders at the state to get those necessary changes, particularly around the SMI population, the Medi-Cal world, along with our healthcare system partners, I think, I think we can continue to see significant progress, but it certainly will not be easy. But I appreciate all the work that has been done. I appreciate the board's support and embrace of the overwhelming majority of these things. We obviously still have some things left we have to do around MAT. We have some things left around serend services. We have a variety of things that are integral pieces of what we need to accomplish, in addition to the execution on the things that we have already, already outlined as priorities. So a lot of work left to do, but I certainly, Dr. Bergman, appreciate deeply you and your team and the, the challenges you face and the, the way you continue to persevere and push ahead. So I think this is a good update. I think it reflects the progress that's been made, and I think we all know we have ways to get where we want to be, but we're on a good path. So thank you for the update.
Hey, any comments? I just would like to start off by, by saying thank you to Dr. Bergman, Dr. Esposito, and Amy Thompson for the report today, the update on the status of our behavioral health continuum of care. You all continue to provide great updates covering all the complex issues, regional issues, and challenges that we have, and I know it's, it's no easy job to tackle all the issues you're dealing with. I know we've been working really hard to build out a state-of-the-art behavioral health system that connects people to the right level of service in their community. The pandemic certainly has been an added element that none of us thought about, but it certainly has impacted the services we provide and the needs of the community to have those services readily available. Now, now more than ever, people need support to navigate through these tough times. I applaud the staff for being proactive and moving forward with the enhancements where we can. I certainly think all regions of the county deserve equitable access to crisis stabilization units for healthcare, mobile crisis response teams to meet people where they are, and certainly help in securing the right kinds of services for those in need, and the continuous care coordination to address their short and long-term needs. I'm especially glad to hear that the Behavioral Health Impact Fund is moving forward. I announced this effort earlier this year in my State of the County address, and I was pleased to partner with Supervisor Fletcher and the City of San Diego to help fill infrastructure gaps in our behavioral health continuum. I believe that this fund will certainly supplement all the good work presented here today, and I look forward to seeing the expansion it will bring to, on the entire region of San Diego County. So with that, any other comments? Okay, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you. Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Jacob?
Aye.
Supervisor Gaspar?
Aye.
Supervisor Fletcher?
Fletcher, aye.
Vice Chairman Desmond?
Aye.
Chairman Cox, that motion passes unanimously with all board members being present and voting aye.
Okay, the last remaining action item we have before we go into closed session is item number 22, which is approval of delivery of, of and related financial documents for the refunding certificates of participation for the county administration center waterfront park, Series 2020A, and the Cedar and Ketner Development, Series 2020B. And I believe Ebony Shelton, our chief financial officer, is going to give us the report on this item.
Thank you. Chairman Cox, members of the board pursuant to Board Policy B65 regarding management of long-term financial obligations. The county monitors and seeks opportunities to refinance its obligations whenever it's economically feasible and beneficial. Current market conditions have created an opportunity to lower annual payments related to the county's 2011 waterfront park and 2012 Cedar and Ketner bonds. Currently, approximately $27.5 million of the waterfront park bonds and approximately $24.9 million of the Cedar and Ketner bonds are outstanding. The refinanced waterfront park bonds referred to as the 2020A Certificate of Participations, or COPs, will be tax-exempt refundings of the original 2011 waterfront park bonds. And it's anticipated to generate annual cash flow savings of approximately $626,000, totaling $8.4 million in total present value savings, representing 30.5% of the refunded value. The expected interest rate is 2% on those bonds. The refinanced Cedar and Ketner bonds, or the Series 2020B COPs, will be a taxable advance refunding of the original 2012 Cedar and Ketner COPs, and is anticipated to generate annual cash flow savings of approximately $209,000, totaling $1.6 million in total present value savings, which represents 6.4% of the refunded value, and the expected interest rate is 2.5% on those bonds. There will be no debt service reserve funds on the refunding COPs, and both Series will reach final maturity in fiscal year 2041, which is one year earlier than the existing maturity. The San Cal Board approved the refunding documents on October 21st, and the recommendation before your board today is to approve the documents to execute this refunding transaction. Thank you, and that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Ebony. Is there any questions or comments? If not, I would move for approval.
Second.
And I would just say, Ebony, thank you for all the hard work you're doing. That's going to save us a considerable amount of money over the next few years, so thanks for staying on top of that. If there is no discussion with the clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you. Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Jacob?
Aye.
Supervisor Gaspar?
Aye.
Supervisor Fletcher?
Fletcher, aye.
Vice Chairman Desmond?
Aye.
Chairman Cox, that motion passes unanimously with all board members being present and voting aye.
Okay. The last item we have on our agenda is item 31, which is closed session. I've been assured by our county council that the closed session will be very short. If there are any reportable items from actions at the closed session, they will be reported out tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. at the beginning of our land use hearing. Mr. Clerk, is there anything else we need to cover?
Mr. Chairman, it will note for the record that during closed session, the board will be considering the potential for conflict of interest in representing both the county and the County of San Diego Independent Redistricting Commission.
With that, we will stand adjourned to closed session. Again, any reportable items will be reported tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. at our land use hearing.
And Mr. Chairman, there were, Mr. Chairman, there were two adjournments, if you'd like to take those today or tomorrow.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize, I didn't get those. That's fine, if you can go ahead and lead us in who's going to be doing those.
Thank you. We have one adjournment from Supervisor Fletcher in honor of Julie Ramirez.
I believe we're going to do that one tomorrow.
And then Mr. Fletcher, did you have another adjournment, remembering those that passed from COVID-19?
I did. Thank you. Today, I'd like to adjourn our Board of Supervisors meeting for all the people we have lost to COVID-19 in San Diego, in the state of California, and around the world. To date, almost 1.2 million people have died from COVID-19 across the world. Here in the United States, it's more than 200, almost nearly 225,000 individuals who have died thus far, more than 18,000 Californians, and of course, here in San Diego County, we're approaching almost 900 individuals who have lost their life to COVID-19. Today, we adjourn in the memory of these individuals, of the lives lost. We celebrate or commemorate the lives they lived, and we wish their, their families our deepest condolences on the unexpected passing, an unfortunate death due to a global pandemic. On Sunday, November 4th, in partnership with, with multiple members of the community and community groups, we will have a COVID-19 Dia de los Muertos altar at the County Administration Center. This is a historic Mesoamerican tradition observed annually on November 1st and 2nd to honor those who have passed away, and I think it's particularly fitting, given the disproportionate nature that COVID has had on the Latino community, that we do come together as a community to continue to remember those we have lost, and opportunity to reflect on the effects of COVID-19 on all communities, and in particular, those communities that have been most impacted. We know that every death counts, that every life matters, and so we will continue to fight to protect our communities and protect our public health, and navigate our way through this very unfortunate, very difficult time for our county, for our state, for our country, and for the entire world. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Fletcher, and I apologize for not picking that up earlier. So we will stand adjourned then till 9:00 a.m. tomorrow morning, and reportable items from closed session will be reported out at 9:00 a.m. tomorrow morning. For the purposes of today's meeting, this meeting is adjourned.